For this opportunity to be of service to this beautiful county. Be with us, be with our deliberations. We ask in the name of thy son, our Savior. Amen?
Amen.
Place a flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. We'll now have the roll call. If you're present.
We have 21 present, three absent. Commissioner A, absent. Commissioner Clodine, two. Commissioner Williams.
Twenty-two present. Commissioner Williams.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one present. Commissioner Williams. Lynch. Commissioner Hayes. Just to report to you, Commissioner Williams is with his son, is being deployed to Iraq, and he's with him through this period of time, which is where he ought to be. And also Commissioner Lynch had some surgery this morning, I just spoke to him 10 minutes ago, and had a cataract repaired today, and he's doing wonderful and doing well, but he's going to stay in tonight. Commissioner Hayes is taking care of her husband Jim, who had back surgery this morning, and he's in the hospital, doing very well, and Commissioner Hayes is with him this evening. So we want to remember those three that are not here. On our agenda tonight, without any objection, I'd like to move up on the agenda, the election of commission chairman and commission pro temp. To this point, is there any objection to bringing forward the election of the chairman, chairman pro temp? I see no objections, so at this time, I'll turn the chair over to County Clerk, Ms. Elaine Anderson.
The floor is now open for nomination for a one-year term for chairperson of the Williamson County Commission. Do I have a nomination?
Mr. Houston, second.
The motion has been made. Mr. Barnwell, and seconded by who?
Commissioner Kane.
Commissioner Kane. Do we have any more nominations? Okay. Do I have a motion that the nomination cease?
Okay.
And do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor of nomination ceasing, cast your vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay. All in favor, Commissioner Nairn, for chairperson of the County Commission, vote yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Nairn has been elected to chairperson of Williamson County Commission for a one-year term, and congratulations, Mr. Houston, I'm glad to get out of this seat. Thank you so much, Houston.
Floor is now open for nomination.
Commissioner Walton.
Chairman Pro Temp. Commissioner Walton is our second. Motion's made by Commissioner Bane, second by Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Walton be chairman pro temp. Other nominations? I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Walton be elected by acclamation.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Cook, the second. All in favor of electing Commissioner Walton as pro temp by, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. Congratulations to Commissioner Walton, chairman pro temp, and certainly thank you for your honor to allow me to serve in this role and work with Jack as my vice chairman. Under the approval of the minutes of the July of the 9th, County Commission meeting, copies were mailed to each of members of the County Commission. I'll entertain a motion, will approve these minutes?
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Chauflin, second by Commissioner Cook, to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Introduction, acceptance of Highway Commission minutes. These were mailed to you, all in favor, these, I'll entertain a motion to accept these. Commissioner Tommy Little, Commissioner Davis, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Under Citizens Communication, we don't have anybody that signed up tonight, and under Communications and Messages, we've got some housekeeping to do. We have two late filed resolutions. Resolution 90733, this is the Williamson Medical Center parking garage situation, it's a late filed resolution. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening? I see no objections, so we will add that resolution as the, if it's on the agenda, as the last other resolution, so we'll be entertaining that. And then we also have an Appropriations Bill, 90734. The Assessor Supplement is a late filed resolution, it's gone through the various committees. Is there any objection at all to adding 90734 to the Appropriations Agenda as the last item under Appropriations? Thank you. I see no objections, so we'll add that as the last Appropriations Agenda item tonight. Also, while we're still under Communications and Messages, I've had a request that we consider moving up Resolution 90722. That's the resolution approving the payment in lieu of taxes for Verizon Wireless. Is there any objection? What I'd like to do is move that up, and we'll hear that as the first item under Appropriations. We'll do that after we have the public hearing. Is there any objection to moving 90722 up as the first item under Appropriations? See no objections, so we'll move 90722 and hear that as the first Appropriations Resolution. And then, we need to move Resolution 90726. This is the resolution that is taking the action to appoint the Ethics Committee, that's sponsored by Commissioners Barnwell, Davis, Mills, and Jones, and I would like to move that resolution up, and we'll hear that resolution right in front of our appointment of the Ethics Committee. It's appropriate that we establish the committee before we take action to put Commissioners on it. So is there any objection to hearing 90726 immediately preceding the Ethics Committee discussion of nominations for that? Any objection to that? I see none, so we'll have that as a part of our discussion at that point, on the agenda. I'd like to thank Sheriff's Department for being here tonight. Lynn Sutton is our Sergeant at Arms, and as we typically do as we go into this meeting, would remind you that this is the legislative session of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, and if you'd be so kind as to turn off pagers or turn your cellphones off, because we really don't want to hear one of them going off during the meeting, and if we could ask your help in doing that, please do so, so that we can maintain an orderly fashion of a meeting tonight. Got a lot to cover, and certainly appreciate all of you that are here tonight to be a part of what we're attempting to do. Any other communications and messages? Yes, we do. Commissioner Bane, if you would, received information that some things have occurred on your resolution as it relates to the condemnation of a piece of property, and you have shared with me that you'd like to pull that from the agenda. You're pulling it, and I tell you what, if we could, and that's Resolution Number 90725, if we could, Commissioner Bane has pulled it, but as a part of the mayor's report tonight, Commissioner, if we could, let's let you and him kind of team up and report to the Commission where we are on that particular situation. So we're going to pull Resolution 90725, but have the mayor and Commissioner Bane report on the status of that piece of property. The only other thing is housekeeping that we need to address tonight, and we will address it at the point in time that we get through some of these appointments. It's been brought to my attention that the appointments of the various committees of the County Commission, and you have these appointments laid, have you passed that out?
They're on the agenda, but I can horse the show.
Okay, we have sheets, and it's been brought to the Chair's attention that we have two situations involving two Commissioners from the same district on the same committee, and that violates a rule. So at the appropriate point tonight, somewhere during, between now and the time we adjourn, we need to take a brief recess, have the Steering Committee convene itself, because until we fix this issue, these two committees are really inhibited from meeting. So what I'd like to do is, the two of you that are involved, Commissioner Little, Tommy Little, and Commissioner Lou Green are both on the Property Committee, that can't be. Commissioner Hester and Commissioner Hancock are on Public Health, which according to our rules cannot be. So those of you on the Steering Committee be thinking that through, because we'll adjourn here or take a recess just a short while, and we need to fix that issue tonight before we leave. Any other announcements or communications before we go to the report from County Offices? Any questions of anybody? I see none. We'll now move to Report of County Offices. County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm going to get David.
Get up here to give an update on the financial situation of the county.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet we have three reports that we normally bring to you each month. The first one is the monthly budget report. Of course, all we have at this point is one month, the month of July, so it's a little early to really make any comparisons there, but yet to tell you that everything is in order with the budget that you passed in July, and those figures represent that. The second report is the privileged, monthly privilege tax report for July, and I will point out to you here that this is the first report where we have the new adequate school facilities tax indicated on this report. It's the first column to your left, and for the first month of July, we collected $269,703. So that's the first month on the adequate schools facilities tax. We do have the August figures in, they're not complete at this time, but that will be in excess of $470,000 for the month of August. Might just call your attention to the monthly total there, as you followed across. There are still some old permits that were approved prior to July of the 1st, paperwork was in, so they are still being paid at the old rate, but when all those are washed out, the monthly total for the adequate school facilities tax should basically equal all the other privilege tax, because we'll be dollar for dollar. Now, you'll see at the bottom of the report, and you'll start seeing that next month, when we make the division of the 30 percent that has to go back to municipalities. We're still in the process of getting their inter-local agreements, and also we still have to get their five-year CIP before we actually cut any checks, but we're in the process of doing that. So if you have any questions about that, or if you need to call the office, we'd be glad to explain any of that to you. The third item that we normally bring to you is the Coles Springs Conference Center. I believe I spoke to you in June or July about they were in the process of hiring a new controller there, and we were kind of behind on their reports. So in your packet tonight, you have April, May, June, and July in your packet tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I've got two or three things. First of all, I would like to invite Mike Weber to the microphone to introduce to all of you our new veterinarian that has been on the staff, so that you all can see her face and see the, I think in front of you, you should have a resume that you can kind of look at the history that she's had, and we're just tickled to death to have her on board. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Tonight, we have two-thirds of our management team of animal control here. Tony Fortner is out of town and couldn't be here. Everybody should know Debbie. Debbie's been around a long time and does an excellent job at animal control, and I wanted to introduce you to our third and newest member of that team who just joined us in June. Dr. Katrina Hurd is our animal control veterinarian. She started on June 4th. As you know, Mr. Chairman, it was a long and extensive search, and that's one reason I wanted to bring her here tonight, so that everybody could see that this position we've had on the books for a while did get filled, and it was an imaginary position. In her resume, and by the way, I sort of did this, I threw this resume together, so if there are any typos, it's my fault, not Dr. Hurd's, or some things left out, et cetera. But you can see she's had some varied experiences in doing different things, that should be a real asset to our animal control. We're seeing changes already out there. I would invite all of you, they do a fantastic, very difficult job out there. It's a very hard place, but they do an outstanding job, and I would invite all of you to visit. You can even go during school hours now, because of the new traffic plan that they have for traffic in front of Franklin High, but would invite all of you to stop by and visit and see our staff there. And just wanted to introduce our new veterinarian to you.
Sit. Dr. Hurd?
Hi, just want to thank everyone for having me. I've been here a few months, and I can honestly say it's been a delight. You have a wonderful animal control facility. I appreciate you supporting my position and bringing me on board. I hope you all support the changes that we plan to make in the very near future to make Williamson County the best animal control facility in the state of Tennessee. So thank you very much.
We are very excited about her being on board. Mr. Chairman, next, I would like to, as Kristi Earwood is coming forward. Many of you have been involved for the last several long months, we're getting into the years now, of the situation in regards to the grassland area that is having and has been experiencing some sewer failures, even when John Hancock used to live out there, which goes back, that goes a long time. So it's only appropriate that we bring to you, and particularly the four County Commissioners that directly represent the eighth and the ninth districts, to get an update. You should have in your packet that was mailed out to you, a overview of that. I'm going to let Kristi County touch on that and answer any particular questions that you may have. I want to say personally, also to Kristi, thank her for all of her hard work. She has spent countless hours contacting many, many neighbors out there to get this program along to the point that it is. Kristi, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't take up too much of your time, but we have been kind of quiet on the project, at least as far as the commission meetings are concerned, so I made a similar report to the Wastewater Authority at their most recent meeting, and wanted to bring the same information to you here and to the public. Back in March, we, as a county, advised the residents in the grassland sewer project area that we had to have some, we had had a lack of response to the easements that are necessary in order to install the sewer line. The main trunk line is going to actually go in the right-of-way in nine instances out of 10, but we needed construction easements, so that we had a place for the trucks to go while we're actually putting the line in. It's just going to be a little trencher, we're not tearing up big swaths of land, but we needed construction easements. And so in order to keep the project costs down, because it is going to be an assessment back to the property owners within the project area, the request was that the property owners in the project area grant the temporary easements, and in some cases, permanent easements. And the response on that was not as quick as we would have liked, and so in order to ensure that there was support for the project, in March of '07, at the public meeting, the county announced that we had to have at least 60 percent of the easements, both temporary and permanent, returned by July 1, in order to go forward with the project. We did in fact receive the 60 percent, and I attribute that entirely to about a handful of residents who live out in those areas, who desperately need the sewer, just going door-to-door, knocking on doors and asking their neighbors for support. And they did, and they came out. At this point, we have 73 percent of the temporary construction easements and 72 percent of the permanent easements. And when I say permanent, there are instances where the line has to go in, can't go in the right-of-way because of a drainage conveyance, or just delay of the land for whatever reason. Smith, Sackman, Reed, our engineering consultants, have worked painfully and tirelessly to minimize that as much as possible. And so we are lucky that we only need 53 of these permanent easements. We have 38 of those, so we only have 15 left to get. Of the temporary easements, we needed 212. We have 155, and so that leaves about 57. Now, at this point, the decision is what to do with those that are outstanding, and that's another reason why I'm here this evening. Of the temporary construction easements, I think the majority will be able to get around those, not having those. It will be more inconvenient for the rest of the residents, because in that instance, the trucks and the equipment and such are actually going to be in the road, and so they may be blocking the road, not entirely, not going to be damaging the road, they're going to be taking up space, whereas they may not be doing that as much if we had those easements. Now, as far as the permanent easements, it's my understanding from our engineering consultants, we have to have those. The line has to go there, there's no other way around it. And so of the 15 left, I know of several folks who are interested in working with the county, it's hopefully just arriving at some language that we can agree upon in the agreement. And then a couple of instances, there are concerns that there's another utility, they want to make sure that we have that located exactly right before they sign the agreement, rightfully so, and I'm happy to work with them in doing so. There are some, however, that have flat said no, and so I will likely be, after I'm, we make one last-ditch effort, and making entirely sure with our engineering consultants that we have to have these, I will likely be returning to you either October or in November, and ask for the authority to acquire these easements through eminent domain, through condemnation. They're only easements, we're not taking a fee. I'd say in almost all of the cases, maybe one or two, we're not even moving a tree or a shrub, and if we are, we're putting it back. We're going to be tunneling under the driveways and not cutting through them, doing everything that we can to not be intrusive. But the bottom line is, we have to have these, and the neighbors out there who need the sewer, they need us to get these for them to go forward. So I will likely be returning. I hope it's not 15, I hope it's only one or two, but it may be as many as 12 or 13. Now, the other part of the grassland sewer project that is going down a parallel track is my agreement with Linwood Utility. As you all know, the county is merely laying the sewer lines, we don't have a treatment plant or a facility, so the lines will be connecting to Linwood's treatment plant. And so as a result, we have, as an account, has had an agreement with Linwood on who's going to treat that, and how it's going to get there, and who's responsible for repairs and all that good stuff. Because Linwood is a private corporation and not a utility district, they are governed by the Tennessee Regulatory Authority. So once we finally arrive at our agreement terms, that will have to be taken to the Tennessee Regulatory Authority for their approval. So that's a parallel track that I'm also working on. And then just tangentially, before we have a final assessment list, I will return to you all, again, to say, okay, here are the properties in the project that will be assessed, the project costs that'll be repaid over time. There are a couple of properties out in Farmington, and I'm saying this as much for the public as for you, there are a number of properties in Farmington that are part of the project, but they're currently connected to Linwood or Linwood Sewers available. There are a handful of neighbors who are trying to get it available before we get there. If that's the case, they will not be part of the assessment, and that's one of the reasons why I haven't brought that to you, so that we have an accurate count, and we're not assessing a sewer fee to the folks who aren't in the project who don't need it. So I'm working with Linwood and the neighbors out there to make sure we have that list entirely correct. And then finally, the last thing, a couple of things in here, but finalizing the mechanism on how to actually bill back the assessment. There are a couple of options that we're considering, just to let you know. One of them is, Linwood currently bills its sewer fee through their water bill, and most, if not all, these residents are serving water through the city of Franklin. Another option would be something along the lines of the tax assessment that they receive anyway, but there are different options to do that as a practical matter, how to collect it, if there are questions, who's the person identified that they call here at the county. So those are just some of the day-to-day practical applications that I'm working on as well. And then with that, Mr. Chairman, I will be quiet and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Kristi. Any questions of Kristi on this project? See none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, once again, I would like, if he would make his way up here, then I'll move on, if Joey Davis would step up here with me in just a few seconds. And while he's coming up, let me kind of touch on the County Chairman's request early on in regard to the piece of property that is being pulled tonight in 90725, that Mr. Bane has co-sponsored along with several others of you. It was brought to our attention on this piece of property, and at your desk, there is also, Steve, let me come out here a little bit and help you. It was, it should be at your desk, a letter that has been received in our office today, dated September the 7th. Last week, we actually received notification in meeting with the, you don't have it? Okay. The TVA folks and the city of Franklin in regards to this piece of property. About two weeks ago, we received notification from TVA about doing some core drilling on the corner property that you all were looking at under consideration, and in dealing with them, where they're going to be running their high-transmissions lines down Long Lane, it was also noted to us by the city, and today we received a letter that they're having a public hearing on this piece of property. Those Commissioners that live out in that area should probably try to attend this public hearing on September the 19th at 5:00 PM in the City Hall Boardroom. It's the intent of the city, and this was my discussion with Commissioner Bane, that the city will be trying to extend Long Lane coming down from Mr. Ladd's property off the top of the hill, either under or over the top of I-65 South and North, and carrying that on over eventually to the Old Patensville Road, which will carry the traffic on over to Lewisburg Pike, if you can kind of follow that logical thinking. I am not opposed to the traffic design that they've put together, I haven't had an opportunity to study it, but conceptually, I'm not opposed to helping traffic getting in and out anywhere on I-65 North or South, certainly on Long Lane. I am opposed, though, to any of my County Commissioners, not mine, but the County Commissioners, that would sponsor a resolution for condemnation, only to turn around and find out you're going to lose approximately 50 percent of it for a road intersection. I did suggest to their body that we go to joint, go jointly together if they felt that was the need, but at this time, I appreciate Mr. Bane pulling that resolution for 30, 60, 90 days until we find out more about the project, and again, I will report to you, Mr. Chairman, on September the 19th at 5:00 PM in the City Hall, Franklin City Hall, they'll be having public comments on the Long Lane slash Old Patensville Road connector.
Commissioner Bane? You need it?
I don't think there's much else to talk about.
That's, that pretty well covers it. Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also ask that you put on your calendar the following date, this is hurriedly done this afternoon, particularly many of you that will be serving on the HR Committee, and I put this out to all of our department heads, also, and all of the elected and appointed folks, that on September the 24th, that should be two weeks from today, at 4:30, we're asking the joint, meet jointly with the HR Committee and the PNI Committee, these will be the new committees that are going into effect after tonight. HR and PNI- HR and PNI, School Board, at four o'clock, excuse me, at four o'clock, I said 4:30, at four o'clock, thank you, Diane. The School Board meets in here that same night, so we need to be finished. The intent of this meeting, for all of the two committees of HR and the Purchase and Insurance, along with the other elected officials and appointed officials and those of concern, will be to talk about GADSPY, to understand GADSPY. And that's Government Accounting Program that we're going to have to address, and how we address that through our health insurance. So, this is the first step of the PNI, we don't want you all to get too settled in your positions without having something to do, so you will have the wonderful opportunity to start. David is inviting a consultant that has done a lot of our reports. That individual or individuals will be attending to try to explain to you a little bit about GADSPY, when it must go into effect, what kind of liability will be charged to the PNL statement, et cetera, et cetera. And at that time, we'll be explaining that to all of you and any other elected officials in that meeting. And it will be a process that we go through, that hopefully, we can come to a decision on that in the very near future. So, again, at four o'clock, September 24th, in this room, and we must be through in time for the School Board. I want to say publicly also, Mr. Chairman, thank you again to the Budget Committee that has just finished serving, under the direction of Mr. Lynch, and many of you sitting here, you were able to bring forth to all the citizens here in Williamson County, a very successful year with no tax increase, and to all the other elected officials, and certainly the School Boards and et cetera, the different groups, we say thank you. Tonight, you'll be voting on four new individuals for the Budget Committee, they have offered to serve, and I appreciate that very, very much. Two of them are brand-new folks, and we're going to be expecting big things out of them under the Purchase and Insurance Committee. Again, there'll be four new ones in that, and they're going to, we're going to throw them right in the fire in two weeks from tonight. So, thank you for agreeing to serve. The Ethics Committee that you'll be looking at, and I want to touch on this one final thing with Joey, I hope he's up here now. Go on, Joey. Oh, a lot of thank you to Joey Davis for spending a lot of time on Capitol Hill, and I wanted you to understand what, about the Property Tax Freeze Implementation Committee. Tonight, you'll be voting on that, and there are certain people that have to serve on that on the legislature. So, Joey, if you would, just take a little bit, a little time, I'll leave this here in case...
Well, as you know, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, as you know, last year, I guess it was November when the elections held, 83 percent of the people in Tennessee voted to freeze property taxes for those over 65. They did not, we did not vote to freeze taxes for the special school districts. It only applies to counties and municipalities. They passed, we passed that with no rules or regulations. And the Attorney General opined that the Division of Property Assessment for the State of Tennessee should, well, actually, the State Board of Equalization, through the Division of Property Assessment, should work out the guidelines on that. And I was fortunate to be one of those picked to work with them on those rules and regulations. And they're ready for us now, ready for you to consider. Mayor Anderson is appointing a committee tonight, and we had the option of doing that or not doing that, and I think he's very wise to put that committee in place for us to study that. Very briefly, the rules simply say for those over 65 years of age, and Attorney General opined that we need to use, should use the median income, median income for Williamson County, some $43,300. We have roughly 3,300 households in Williamson County that are going to qualify for that program. So, it's a monumental program. I have no means to tell you what it's going to cost us, or what it will not cost us, that's exactly what the committee's going to set about doing, see if we can come up with the figures on that, and whether we need to proceed. Brief enough of a few.
And if you will notice, in the Resolution 907-27 that you're voting on tonight, we took the liberty to extend the 2007/8 Tax Study Committee that you all have already appointed, rather than trying to find new people to serve in that. So, that particular committee will be automatically thrust into this new program of the Property Tax Freeze Implementation Committee to, instead of voiding or trying to add on some more committees. Under the Ethics Committee, you're voting on that, those gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen have agreed to serve, all five of those I have made contact with, and they have agreed to serve in that capacity. Houston has been very helpful in that, and I want to say thank you to those men and women that will serve on that Ethics Committee for one year, and we'll be reappointing that every single year. Mr. Chairman, I know it was long, we had a lot of information to cover, and I'll entertain any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, I know it's been talked about, but there have been some confusion, I think county-wide, on this whole legislation of the property tax freeze, just for the official record, that has not gone into effect. And it will not go into effect. Joey, come on back up here, because there have been several people that have stopped me, and I know other commissioners saying, hey, glad you're freezing my taxes. Would you explain, because we do have a viewing audience, explain how that will become effective, and when it will become effective, if in fact, the action is taken that we're proceeding toward?
Yes, sir. Obviously, it only becomes effective when the local governing body adopts that, you all through Resolution, City of Franklin through ordinance, or however they adopt that through their board, or any municipality. If you all choose in this, in this year, this calendar year of 2007, if you approve that, then we would freeze the taxes at the 2007 level for the 2008 year. Got me? You cannot, you all cannot vote in 2007 to freeze them for this year. You're voting, when the committee comes back to you, to freeze them at the level that it is this year. Or if you choose not to approve that this year, and you approve it in 2008, you'll be freezing the 2009 taxes at the 2008 level. You can't put it into effect the same year you approve it. It is a property tax freeze. I have the same questions you do, sir, of do I now not have to pay taxes? What are my taxes? There are a lot of questions, there's a lot of misinformation, and Mayor Anderson has spoken, we hope the committee can get out some word on that. We have, we have chosen my office not to address it publicly until you pass it, so I can tell people what it is. I'm speaking to the Bethesda senior citizens tomorrow about tax relief, I'm sure that this will come up, but we will, I'll explain to them that we're not going to do anything with it until you pass it.
Any questions of any commissioner, of Mr. Davis? Commissioner Wilson, please.
The question I have, Joey, is with your tax relief program that you already have in place, will this affect the tax relief program that you presently have?
Commissioner Wilson, thank you for the question. I, as your trustee, I grossly underestimated property tax relief in the 2006 year. As you know, from, Rogers, do you know when the state approved tax relief, somewhere back in the 70s? Before my time as your trustee, the state passed the state property tax relief program, and from $0 up until last year, it had only risen to $13,000. In one fell swoop last year, the state raised that level up from 13, $12,900, 13,000 to 20,000. I grossly underestimated what that impact was going to have on my office. It was a very negative impact. This year, we've raised, the state's raised that from 20,000 to 24,000, and you all have given me the authority to do that. Now, to answer your question, I had to say it to answer this, ma'am. I can't tell you what impact it's going to have. I see that if you round that number off to 3,500 households, I can't tell you how many people come to the office. Mayor Anderson and Chairman Nairn have been more than supportive, they've been up in the office. Al Ritter's been up in the office. We've just agreed to, we'll just do what we got to do, see what we got to do, that's all we can do. But we'll handle it for you, and we'll do it in a professional way, I promise you.
Other questions of Mr. Davis? Thank you, Joey.
Anything else?
Any questions of Mayor Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Another announcement, the Director of the Tennessee County Commissioners Association called my office this afternoon to inform me that the regional meeting in Nashville tomorrow night has been canceled. So, those of you that were planning on going, they discovered it's election day in Davidson County, and I thought, duh, you know, it's been that way for a while. But also, there were other counties that had other activities, and it was discovered about midday today that the only people coming tomorrow night was the delegation from Williamson County. So, we decided that we could, we're going to be together tonight. So, David Connor, the Executive Director of the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, has agreed to either come to our next meeting, or come meet with us. So, there's also a meeting at, Henry Horton thinks is coming up. So, we'll, we'll relook at that and decide, but anyway, the meeting tomorrow night has been canceled. Williamson County Director of School, Dr. Rebecca Sharber, please.
Good evening. Before I start my report, I'd like to welcome one of our School Board members. Our Board members don't often get a chance to visit with the County Commission, but Barry Watkins is in the audience, and thank you, Barry, for being here for support. It's always good to have our Board members have an opportunity to be with us as well. I know that probably one of the things you're wondering most about is our student enrollment, and we have actually been in school already for weeks, which is hard to believe, we're almost halfway through the first nine weeks. And I have presented you the enrollment for the school district on Labor, or the day after Labor Day. We are down 360 children from where we thought we'd be, not from where we were last year. We're up about 1,371 from the day after Labor Day last year. We have not hired 11 classroom teachers last week, that number was 13, but we had one child to show up in Fairview, which put us over the K through three people teacher ratio average, so we had to hire a teacher there, because one child showed up, and we had a child to show up at Chapman's Retreat, that put us over the K through three ratio there as well. So, we needed to use two of those teachers just last week that we thought we would still have in reserve. Looking at last year's growth during the year, it appears that we won't probably grow more than that, based on the fact that we didn't grow as much as we had anticipated over the summer. So, certainly, I believe there are enough reserved teachers in our budget to handle any additional growth this year. We do still have two of the five career and technical teachers that we had put aside to make sure we didn't keep from having career and technical courses in our schools, because we were worried about how that would affect our pupil teacher ratio. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that. It's kind of been nice not to grow the 1,700 children we thought we would, because it's been a little bit easier in terms of not having to move people around quite as much as we often have in the, in the past.
Any questions of Director Sharber? Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, Dr. Sharber, you and I have discussed today the, the fact that the org chart we were provided is about 130 positions higher than what we've approved. And in your research this afternoon, you, you basically were able to tell me that it represents 160 teachers, or 160 personnel, Williamson County personnel, that are covered by federal funding.
Well, the, the numbers don't exactly match. We do have 160 full-time equivalent people in our federal funds, which are funds that never go through the general purpose budget, because of the way the state sends the federal funds to the school districts. I've talked with David Coleman briefly, right before the meeting, to help understand why it happens that way, and we need some time to research it thoroughly, but we believe that the auditors either encouraged us to do it that way, or told us we should do it that way. And in your funding budget resolution, there is a statement about how federal funds are simply approved by the School Board, coming from the state directly to the schools. The School Board approves a consolidated plan that lists those positions, as well as every year, they do a cleanup housekeeping budget that makes sure all those federal funds have been put in the right place.
But, but the County Commission does not, does not see any of that documentation for these 160 personnel?
At this point, they don't.
Now, of those people, okay, we're supposedly, the feds are paying for their healthcare, are they paying for their retirement and all that other stuff? Because I know every year, we get to put more money in to retirement, do these people, do we have to pay that money also?
It's my understanding the federal funds pay for everything for those people. And in fact, that the programs themselves, the federal funds themselves don't generally get larger, but because of the benefits, the retirement, the health insurance, we end up cutting positions in the federal programs. Our reading recovery program is a Title I of federal program, and we've actually reduced our service to children over time, because that program, the funds have not grown, but the expenses have grown within the program, because of raises and because of the benefits. And our biggest federal funds are, come through special ed, through the IDEA funding.
Because I'm really concerned with 160 people, that this commission doesn't actually have knowledge of that they exist on a yearly basis. And I don't know whether the Education Committee needs to look at this, and have you research it for them, or whatever, but I think this commission needs a little more information on how all this comes together, and why, you know, why we don't. I mean, every resolution that we see from a County Commission standpoint, whether it's a $5 donation to the library for books, we have to do a resolution on, to pay, to show that coming in and going back out again. And I just, this one just, being a $6 million program, sort of concerns me.
We'd be glad to get some research together to tell you why it is that way. I'm sure it's that way, because it's the way we're supposed to do it. But that wouldn't preclude us from certainly giving an informational report, it's just not something that's part of the process at this point.
Okay. I'd like you to do the research and get back to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm sure everyone did, I hope everyone did, received the organizational chart, there was supposed to be an organizational chart and a memo about the capital outlay put in each of your packets. Do you have any other questions about those two items? Because Mr. Barnwell added up all those numbers on that organizational chart, and when that number didn't match what's in our general purpose budget, he called, which I appreciate, because on all the memos I send, I say, if you have any concerns or questions, please call. So, I appreciated him calling, and that's where that information came from, so thank you for, for pointing that out. But we think, actually, that organizational chart was perfectly correct when we sent it to you, but of course, the new teacher at Fairview and the new teacher at Chapman's Retreat, were not on there at the time. So, our document, our chart is a little bit fluid in terms of personnel. Also, some of our federal people are not fully hired, some of our teacher assistants for special education, we're still looking for some positions there. So, some of these school-related positions are fluid throughout the year, based on when they're hired or not hired.
Commissioner Ford, please.
Dr. Sharber, since you mentioned the capital outlay, does the movement of laptops from the eighth and ninth grade teachers into senior high teachers for the, as I understand, the senior high teachers are now going to have their own laptop that they can take from class to class, be able to set up in case they're moving classrooms. Does that signal a change? And the eighth and ninth grade, I understood was a precursor to a program where the students were then going to be receiving laptops. Does the change in, and where those laptops went this year, signal a change in philosophy away from the students receiving laptop as one of your priorities?
Let me just remind you that ninth grade teachers are senior high school teachers.
I understand, yes.
Okay. So, the only people who we said were in that program were eighth grade teachers who did not receive the laptops.
I understand.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because you, we're grouping them together.
I understand.
Okay. Actually, I do still want to work with the board to talk about putting computers in the hands of students. But we are working strongly with the ninth grade teachers this year, and we would propose, depending on how the funding would go, and how we would propose the funding, and how the rollout would go, which we're still working on, all of those details, we would propose that the ninth graders next year would receive laptops, and then each year, ninth graders would receive laptops, and they would move up, and we would train the teachers strongly on using those laptops for instructional purposes each year, as the children were moving up. We trained the teachers a year ahead of the children.
Okay. Thank you.
So, it's still basically the same concept, except instead of starting at the eighth grade, we would start at the ninth grade. But we don't have all of... But we don't have all of that laid out, and the board hasn't approved all of that. And the board may or may not approve it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Cook.
Okay. You just stated that as the eighth graders would move up to the ninth grade, they would get laptops. Well, what happens to the laptops that the 12th graders had?
Well, the, the 12th graders this year would never have laptops.
No, but when you eventually get to the 12th grade...
Well, after four years, and, and these are details we do not have worked out, but this is my thought, but we do not have this worked out. No one has approved this. I'm going to tell you this, but this is just all theory, that we would think about leasing the computers. After four years of use, we could probably turn them back in because four years of leasing and using a computer would probably be the lifetime of a laptop.
And did you also do the wifi for the high schools that you had talked about?
We are still working on that, yes. The, the only part of the technology proposal in our capital plan that we reduced that I remember, and I don't have it all in front of me, is we were, we had a part in there to do video security in the elementary schools, like we've been doing in the middle and high schools. And we were only going to be able to do part of the elementary schools this year, and we just reduced that number a little bit more.
Thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Sharber?
I, I did want, if it would be okay, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Fortney is here. We had a headline about our sewage treatment plan at Independence yesterday. And he has some information because we've done a lot of research on that in the last couple of days. And I know also there might be a question about the sign at Sunset Elementary Middle. And he has some information on that. Could he come forward and give you that information?
Bring us the report on the smell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. We had a request for a, a notification from TDEC regarding a complaint at Independence High School about a sewage odor that was coming from the plant. We have checked into the operation of the plant. I'll step back just a little bit here. In May, there was a complaint that came in. It was investigated by our personnel and also TDEC. The TDEC representative visited the site. They observed one drip field line in the lower drip field of five zones, one of five zones, that when we had equipment on their mowing, there was a line that was separated. That was repaired. There has been another complaint received just recently. I received the call on Thursday of last week about odor that was coming up into the grandstand area. Long and short of it, we've investigated that again. We've talked to TDEC, the TDEC representative. He has made a site visit. He did observe some standing water in that lowers, lower zone of the drip field, which could indicate one of two things. One, a separated line, or the loop line not backfleshing properly. We've investigated all that. We've consulted, called our consultant in to check solenoid valves and so forth. Long and short of it, we have no odor at the drip field. Today, we were down there. There's no odor at the sewer plant itself. But we did find a sewer line cleanout that had been apparently damaged somehow. But long and short of it, the four-inch diameter line was broken off. We have had that since repair, to put an order in to repair that today. We noticed that because when we were walking the site, we did get the odor, and it depends on how the wind blows. But it's located about 50, 60 feet away from the grandstand along the west side of it. So I think we've got that under control.
Would you address who's breaking the line and who's going to pay for it?
Well, the line is a cleanout that stubs up right at the ground level. It could have been broke by a mower. It appears, and I've got photographs of it, to be honest, it appears with the straight edges that's on it, that it could have been vandalism. It's just been cut, Mr. Chairman. Can't answer that question for you. The cost to repair it is a matter of a $6 threaded sleeve and a cap, plus the labor to put it in place. So we've got that under control through our, through our, you know, maintenance department. But this hit headlines at a, a shock to us because we did talk to the news media last Friday, and we were very surprised with all of the, the incidents that came about over it. The other one that we were looking at is that we also have a Schaefer plant that's adjoining, or not adjoining our property, but directly south of 840, that we don't know if that's creating any kind of issues or not. But it seems like anytime there is something, they, they want to talk to Independence High School. Again, we did find an odor, and it was from a four, a four-inch diameter cleanout line. The sign on Sunset, really quick. There's about nine bundle of brick that Mr. Commissioner Green has observed out there. After many discussions about the design on, on how the sign should be, and with the upcoming, coming road widening, we have finally settled on a design for the signs at Sunset. They're going to be on a, if they're going to be brick signs, it's going to be on a radius that will identify that as a Sunset campus. There will be one sign on each side of the entrance road. One will say, well, both of them will say Sunset School Campus. We feel as though we need it on both sides to identify because we've got such a narrow opening there at the school. We've got about 160-foot frontage along there. So we wanted to make sure that we can get traffic to see those signs coming from both directions. So we hope to get going on that. We should have final pricing on that by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something Dr. Sharber had said, and just for clarification for me, you talked about you took the, the video out of the elementary schools?
Not totally, a little bit of it.
But you, you took the money out to buy these computers?
No, no, that had nothing to do with it. You know, we had to reduce our total capital outlay request. And some of the money came out of maintenance and some of, some of it came out of technology. Where I took it out of technology was in the video. No, exactly what we said we were going to spend on computers is what we spent on computers.
Right.
I did want to, Mr. Chairman, say one more thing. I wanted to thank the commission. If you vote to support the Verizon deal, I want to thank you for continuing to support education by making sure those education taxes are always protected. So I know the school board appreciates that, and I certainly appreciate it, too.
Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since you brought up signs, I know I've asked this question before, but Franklin High School has a wonderful new building beside, but they still have a very old outdated sort of crumbling sign. When is that perhaps going to be addressed?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner Brockman, we have a design. I'd be glad to provide you a copy of that. I know you were very instrumental in, on the committee when the building was designed. So I'm sure that's of interest to a lot of you. We'll get that over to you. One of the things that's occurred that we've held off on that because we have been notified by the city of Franklin that they are widening the road. We don't know exactly what that impact's going to be with regard to utilities. It could be, we, we've received information from their design engineers requesting a construction easement. And you had a conversation early on about a construction easement, and we've granted that construction, construction easement. However, it will encroach somewhat where the flagpole is and the, the circular pavement. They won't tear that up, but they're going to be regrading that whole area. So right now, we feel as though the sign that we've got out there, although it's not very attractive, it's, it is a sign that, that they can still use for advertisement and identify the school. But once that roadwork gets done, I think that's the appropriate time to locate the new sign.
I feel better. It's in the bureaucracy of, of all of the things that we do, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, please.
Yes, I'd like to thank the commission and the school board. Saturday night, we had the Williamson County band exposition at Fairview High School. And with the commission and the school board's help, we had plenty of bleachers and everything looked great out there. Commissioner Ford was out there to support it. And Commissioner Davis, I didn't see you, but thanks, thanks for all your support.
Other questions, comments of Dr. Sharber at this point? I see none.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is hospital report. Did Mr. Miller, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I've just got a few things for you. I'm glad to say that we're, got 100% complete on our major construction, and we did come in under $2 million on the budget. We've still got some minor projects going on. We're going to be starting some more projects. We still have several doctors that's coming out to our place from Nashville, Sumter County, just a little bit of every place. And with that, we're going to start our parking garage in about three weeks. That's what we're, the county transportation department is grading out a lot for us and things, and saved us probably $100,000. So they think they'll be through fit in three weeks. As soon as they do that, we'll start our parking garage. And parking garage's not cheap. That's at $7,700,000, the general improvement, and I'd prefer us to be extending the loan out for 15 years. After, also, right now, we're starting our outpatient extension of radiology. It's down on Corruthers Road. After that, we'll be developing more OR suites because we're starting to get close to capacity. The last thing I'd like to personally invite you to our open house that's being held in conjunction with Williamson Franklin Chamber of Commerce, Thursday, 5:00 to 7:30. And if the ones that have not been out there, I know Burt's been all over the place out there, and Tom Bane, you know, kind of goes all over, Ms. Mills, Russell, Steve. But I think you'll be amazed at what you see. And we would personally like to have you all out there. And with that, is there any questions I may be able to answer?
Would you repeat the time and place?
It'll be in our main lobby, 5 o'clock to 7:30 on Thursday.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Any other committee wishing to report at this time? If you would mark on your calendars, September the 20th, 5:00 PM in the afternoon is a Rules Committee meeting. Rules Committee meeting, September 20th, 5:00 PM. Okay, moving on to elections and appointments. County mayor's recommendation, this is Board of Health, Registered Nurse Representative, resigned Brenda McClanahan. Nomination, Gina Rousch. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Brockman, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Public Records Commission, Genealogist Representative, resigned Vance Little. Nomination, Richard T. Spencer. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. We're moving forward now, Resolution 90726. This is the resolution that's establishing the Ethics Committee. Resolution 90726, resolution to establish the Williamson County Ethics Committee. Commissioners Barnwell, Davis, Mills, and Jones.
Approve.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for this resolution, 90726. The committee reports, it went to the steering committee. It looks like that vote was 5, 4, 0 against. Explanation, the Commissioners Barnwell, Mills, Jones, and Davis.
Yes, this is the, the establishment of the committee that we set up when we passed the, the ethics resolution a few months back. And this is the committee that will be partaking in the, in monitoring the ethics of the county, of elected officials and appointed officials and about everybody else on that.
Any of the other sponsors like to address this? Any other discussion on Resolution 90726? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote, to record a vote, please.
21, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted, 21, yes, 0, no. So we're back now to the appointment of the Ethics Committee. It's on the agenda. As you see, the recommendation from the county mayor, and these are the recommendations of the county mayor for a one-year term. County Commissioner Louis Green, County Commissioner Houston Naren, County Commissioner Ernie Williams, Constitutional County Officer, Board Committee Commission, Sadie Wade, Registered Deeds, and also North County Board Committee Commission Authority Corporation or other. And this is Rick Berger, who's a member of the Water Authority. So these five individuals will serve a one-year term as the new Ethics Committee of the Williamson County. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Hancock, the second. Commissioner Mills. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Also, recommendations from the county mayor for the Budget Committee. Commissioner Russell Little, Chair. Commissioner Jeff Ford. Commissioner Mary Brockman. Commissioner Jack Walton. And of course, Mayor Rogers Anderson serves as a member of that committee. I'll entertain a motion. Who was the sole mover here? Hancock, the motion. Commissioner Mills, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Purchasing Insurance Committee. Commissioner Judy Hayes. Commissioner Doug Langston. Commissioner Tom Bane. Commissioner Jason Para. And County Mayor Rogers Anderson. Commissioner Hancock, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Library Board of Trustees, unexpired term, expiring 609. Resigned Teresa Barnhill. Nomination, Carol Moth. Commissioner Barnwell, the motion. Commissioner Jones, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. The school board, unexpired term, of Mr. Ed Bailey. Will move, roll that forward, Madam Clerk, the next month because there's no nomination tonight. So we'll advertise that for next month. The steering committee recommendations, and we've got several of these. And I understand we've got a conflict under Public Health and Property Committee. So let, let's address the Investment Committee. I'm going to vote on all of these, and we're going to take a recess to have the steering committee address these two issues that must be fixed this evening. Investment Committee, Commissioner Barnwell. Commissioner Erlene Cook. Commissioner Clyde Lynch. Joey Davis, trustee. Rogers Anderson, county mayor. Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Langston, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Audit Committee. Commissioner Russell Little. Commissioner Clyde Lynch. Commissioner Steve Smith. Commissioner Bane, the motion. Commissioner Walton, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Law Enforcement, Public Safety. Commissioner Steve Smith is Chair. Commissioner Greg Davis. Commissioner John Hancock. Commissioner Ricky Jones. Commissioner Mary Mills. Commissioner Ernie Williams. Commissioner Cheryl Wilson. Yeah, that's a good point. I'll tell you what, let's do. Let's back up, let's hold off on the law enforcement. Let's look at these five committees because on public health, for example, Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Hester are both on that committee. And if we move one of them off, we're going to have to move somebody from another committee to that one to fill the spot. So at this point in time, what I've, who else on the steering committee? Commissioner Hancock?
You also have the same issue on property.
Correct. We've got the issue on property, and we've got the issue on the public health committee. So we're going to have to make some changes. So who, who else on the steering committee? Commissioner Para, Jones, Cook, Davis, Barnwell, and Commissioner Mills. So let's declare recess, and I want the steering... So let's declare recess, and I want the Steering Committee to get together, and we need to fix the Property Committee, because we've got two members of the same district on the Property Committee, and the same thing for Public Health Committee. So if we could, let's take a recess, have the Steering Committee fix that problem, and we'll come back, and let's try to get that done if we can in the next 10 minutes. We're in recess.
Commissioner Steve Smith is Chair. Commissioner Greg Davis, Commissioner John Hancock, Commissioner Ricky Jones, Commissioner Mary Mills, Commissioner Ernie Williams, Commissioner Tommy Little.
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the motion. Commissioner Barnwell, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous adoption of Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee. Property Committee. Commissioner Louis Green is Chair. Commissioner Bert Chalfont, Commissioner Arlene Cook, Commissioner Doug Langston, Commissioner Harry Mills, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, Commissioner Betsy Hester.
That's correct.
Motion is made and seconded by Commissioner Hancock, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Education Committee. Commissioner Greg Davis, Chair. Commissioner Tom Bain, Commissioner Reba Greer, Commissioner Betsy Hester, Commissioner Doug Langston, Commissioner Jason Para, Commissioner Ernie Williams.
Motion for approval.
Commissioner Davis, the motion. Commissioner Walton, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Tax Study Committee. Bob Barnwell. Did you say that you're not the Chair?
No, we haven't got a Chair.
Okay, so you'll have to elect a Chair. Commissioner Bert Chalfont, Commissioner Louis Green, Commissioner Reba Greer, Commissioner Judy Hayes.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Mills, the motion. Commissioner Langston, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Public Health Committee. Commissioner Tommy Little, Chair. Commissioner Tom Bain, Commissioner John Hancock, Commissioner Judy Hayes, Commissioner Bob Barnwell, Commissioner Ricky Jones, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson.
Motion for approval.
Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Chalfont, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. So those are the appointed committees with the changes of those three committees. So those will be effective so that we can go ahead and have our meetings and...
Do you have them? Be sure they know that their standing meeting dates and times are almost...
On the... Does everybody have a list of these committees?
Probably not. But they really need one.
You know, pass this list of committees out and all of you need to be aware that your committee has a set meeting date and time and hopefully you can work within this framework of scheduled meeting times because the Budget Committee sets its meeting and a lot of things focus around that. So please look at the committees.
These don't have the new members.
These won't have the new members.
I have one.
If you want to update that, you'll need to make the change. On Law Enforcement, replace Commissioner Wilson with Commissioner Tommy Little. Property Committee, replace Commissioner Tommy Little with Commissioner Betsy Hester. And then under the Public Health Committee, replace Commissioner Hester with Commissioner So if you would, look at those meeting dates and times and we'll move from there to get our committee system up and rolling. Under notaries, each of you have received the nominations. All this information was sent in the mail, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the notaries as presented.
Motion for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Smith, the second. All in favor of the notaries as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. On the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
We have two resolutions on the Consent Agenda. Excuse me?
We passed the Ethics Committees with some wording that needs to be changed on that. I'm not sure of the correct procedure of how to go about this, but we need to amend that. We need to bring that, reconsider that and have a word changed in it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Little. Commissioner Little is making a motion to reconsider Resolution 90726. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to reconsider is appropriate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 90726, in the last paragraph now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County Meeting in Regular Session on the 10th of September establishes the Ethics Committee to be made up of five members... Change the word Commissioners. Five Members who shall be appointed by the County Mayor and confirmed by the Board of Commissioners. So that's the amendment, Commissioner Little, that you're proposing. Is there a second? Commissioner Smith, the second. So we're changing that to read establishes the Ethics Committee to be made up of five Members who shall be appointed.
She's lighting it on.
Okay? So we're getting that amendment loaded onto the machine, 90726. We're replacing the word Commissioners with Members. You've heard the motion. You've heard the second. In favor of 90726, this is the amendment. We'll vote on the amendment. In favor of the amendment, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Anybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 90726 has been amended to state made up of five Members. So 90726 is amended. If you're in favor of 90726 is amended, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Anybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. 90726 is amended, has been amended. Thank you, Commissioner Little, for bringing that to our attention. Consent Agenda, two resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the Consent Agenda. Moving on to zoning. We do have one zoning hearing tonight. We'll have a public hearing. Public hearing, and I'll now open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding Resolution Number 9071. Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 18, 1988 regarding rural retreat uses. Floor is now open. Public hearing is now open. If you would, please come to the microphone and identify yourself. We'll allow you to address this public hearing for this resolution. Anyone wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. We'll now entertain Resolution Number 9071. Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 18, 1988 regarding rural retreat uses. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Motion is made and seconded by Commissioner Walton. Planning Commission, report.
Nine, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton, please.
Yes, sir. We're changing this ordinance on this rural retreat and basically the old verbiage said one additional guest room or one campsite. Now they're changing it to one additional guest room and one campsite.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Walton on this zoning ordinance change? I see none. In favor of 9071, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Moving on to appropriations. We've moved up Resolution 90722. This is a resolution to approve a pilot payment in lieu of taxes program for Verizon Wireless as requested by the Industrial Development Board of Williamson County. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Bain, the motion. Commissioner Walton, the second. This went before the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee passed this resolution, three, four, one against. Property Committee? Tax Study Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Industrial Development Board, five, four, zero against and one pass. Explanation, if you would, to Commissioner Walton. Hancock and Green, please.
Yes, sir. This is a pilot program, as we've done in the past, to allow Verizon Wireless to move to Williamson County, their state headquarters, going to create 1,326 jobs and they still pay the school portion on the property tax.
Add to that, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes. Commissioners, I think it well to note that that property now is bringing in revenue $20,000, approximately $20,000 per year. And if this passes the first year and for each additional year is for five after that, it will be bringing in $121,000 and then it goes to 200 and I think 16,000. So the numbers are 200,000 in property taxes in five years, six years versus 1.5 million in the same length of time. So it is a... And also, I might say this, the infrastructure, it's in the city and the infrastructure is already there. They're not going to be having to add anything. They've already got the sewers, the fire protection.
Thank you.
Police protection.
Commissioner Green, as a sponsor, would you like to say anything on the resolution?
No, I just think this is a win-win situation for the county and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hester, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank our County Mayor, our Industrial Development Board and the representatives from the City of Franklin for all of their hard work on this. I know that they spent many hours on this situation with Verizon. And I do know that Verizon, I feel that they are a good match for our county. I have had several communications from constituents, however, who are concerned about our water situation due to the drought. Several constituents have been very concerned about our roads. Case in point, this morning at about 8:30, 9 o'clock on Lewisburg Pike and Columbia Pike, there was a great deal of volume moving very, very slowly. So I would like to say that on behalf of my constituents and the input that they have had to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Greer?
I need to declare an indirect conflict of interest. In accordance with the Tennessee Ethics Law and the recently adopted Williamson County Code of Ethics Policy, I declare that since I own a non-controlling ownership amount of stock in Verizon, I may have an indirect conflict of interest in the request about to be heard and voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to the citizens of Williamson County.
Thank you, Commissioner Greer. And as Chairman of the Commission, I must declare the same conflict of interest. I own a non-controlling interest in Verizon Wireless and will declare the same conflict as has Commissioner Greer. Anybody else wishing to declare conflict? If you own any Verizon Wireless stock, this is the appropriate declaration for you to make. Thank you very much. Moving on to Commissioner Para, please.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, maybe the sponsors can outline. The 180,000 square feet, is that enough to house the 1,326 employees? I just ask because it says they're going to fill 665 in the next two years, so I'm just wondering, that building that they're building is enough to house the 1,326? And do we have any idea? Have they said when they plan to try to employ that number?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I think the architect or somebody here from Verizon is here.
Mayor Anderson, can you answer that?
I'd be glad. In the meantime, I might introduce the South Area Financial Services, Alan Willett, as he's coming up. If you would, come on up and address these. Commissioner, the answer that we were given to us, they are building the 180,000, approximately 180,000 square foot to house the entire 1,300-plus employees on down the road. Now, that's not to say they won't need additional building space. Their southeast manager from the, I guess it was Charlotte area, was here, was indicating that. But this is supposed to be enough for their number of their people that they plan to transfer down from the Grassmere location as well as hire the additional people. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Really, nothing much further to add to that. We do plan on taking the 500 or 550 or so employees that we've got scattered across Grassmere today, get them all into one roof there in Cool Springs. And then over the next three to five years, bring in those additional 600 to 700 employees. So, you know, our architects, our space planners have, you know, given us the detailed designs that show that that 180,000 square foot facility will adequately meet our needs for the present need as well as future growth.
Thank you. Just, Alan, just stay close in case something else comes up. Commissioner Walton, you have a question?
I was just going to...
Commissioner Ford, please.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So 539 to 665, that's an additional 100 and so that you're planning on hiring within the first two years. Is that what I'm reading here? Because it says 665 within two years is what you've committed to. So will those be brand-new employees for Verizon or are they somewhere else? Do you have other people spread across the state that are coming in?
Most of the additional positions will be new positions just to keep up with customer growth, the demand. We've also, we're trying to build for future needs to make sure that, you know, if we do want to move employees from some of our other locations, that we'll have that opportunity to do that here in Nashville. So it'll probably be a mixture of both.
What kind of jobs are these?
It's, the new jobs are going to cross a variety of different functions. Everything from business sales positions, customer service positions. My own team in finance will be hiring quite a few IT, HR, marketing. So everyone has opportunities for some growth. So everyone's looking to take advantage of the space to increase their headcount.
And do you know about how many of the current employees live in Williamson County?
Yeah, honestly, not very many today. I would say less than 10% of our existing staff lives in Williamson County today. You know, we're in such a good central location right now in Grassmere that we pull from all over Middle Tennessee. We have employees that come from Clarksville, from out in Wilson County, Dixon, even as far south as Columbia and beyond that. So, you know...
Columbia will be closer.
True, true. We're hoping to get track more of those, especially from Thompson Station, Spring Hill, that area as well. So even though there's a small percentage of our existing employee base that lives here in Williamson County, I expect that to shift and grow significantly as we, you know, hire from within this community.
And so since most of those live outside, they'll be using the roads and the infrastructure to come into here and place additional strain on that infrastructure that's not currently there, especially up and down Cool Springs Boulevard, be, I guess, the main way in and out of there?
One of the good things that we liked about this location is there's going to be a variety of means to get in and out of this facility. You know, the facility is located on Duke Drive, which used to end in the cul-de-sac. That has been extended now over to Mallory Station.
Right.
So that'll provide access, you know, to Franklin Road. Also, I believe there are plans to connect part of the Aspern Grove Road over to the McEwen area, so they'll be able to, you know, access I-65 from that route. So from, you know, our studies, there's been, I believe, three traffic studies that have been done so far. They are going to look to make a couple of road improvements.
The other note that you probably wouldn't realize, Commissioner, is that they have done quite a bit of road study work and they're prepared to do some phase-in on their jobs when they come to work. They all won't be coming at the one particular time. So many of their jobs will be, they could phase them in at 7:00, 7:30, 8 o'clock, 8:30, and then quite a few of them not necessarily always come into the office, as you would imagine. So a lot of them could be working.
Yeah, I was going to ask with some of the customer service, I would think there'd be some 24-hour, some off-hour people coming in on those also.
Yeah. It probably, it will not be a 24-hour center, but we will have extended hours, you know, probably till 10 or 11 p.m. So we'll have...
I'm just concerned with dumping 1,300 cars in on Cool Springs Boulevard, which already, there's plenty of times you can't hardly even get through there. Can, what's the dollar amount of the abatement?
The total abatement, as David will kind of make his way up here, is in the neighborhood of $412,000 for us over a five-year window that begins on... They're expecting to get into this building. We have been told by their management services, they need to be in there at the close of 2008 because of their lease arrangement at the other buildings. And again, this is, you know, a state headquarters. I want to stress that to you, that the other locations, they're not, they're not state headquarters. So I will let David give you the exact number. Once again, as been reported, we've preserved the tax base. It's approximately, what is it, 82,000, David? Eighty, $81,200 a year for the five years to get you to, get you to a little over 400,000. And the city will be doing their discussions tomorrow night on those issues as far as their tax incentives. So it's a package of about a half a million dollars in order to get this, get this particular firm here.
Right. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, before we go away, he made reference to it early on and I know Alan just forgot to mention it. One of the things they're bringing to this area, and I'll let him step back up here if you'd let me, is they have one other location. I believe the management team that was here earlier indicated the only other one they've got is in the Richmond area where they're doing a lot of high-tech training for the corporate people to be able to see what all is occurring in the wireless communication.
Certainly. Thank you. There are a couple of additional benefits that we're looking to get out of this center. One, you know, we'll have some state-of-the-art training facilities that not only will be used for the employees that we'll be hiring and that will be working there in this new center, but also we'll have an opportunity to bring, you know, other Verizon Wireless employees from across the state, from across the region to use this training facility. Also, we're investing a million dollars into a wireless data technology center, which will be used to showcase our most advanced data technology products and services. So it'll give an opportunity for customers to come in and see the services that we can provide and let us showcase, you know, some of the technology. And you're right, that's one of, I believe, two or three in existence of Verizon Wireless.
Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support this initiative. I just wanted to make a point, even though the City of Franklin governs the design standards, I would just sort of like to say that some of the initiatives that are going forward in terms of building green buildings, facilities that are this large, 180,000 square feet, plus the asphalt associated with it, it is something that I think it's important to look at and I hope your architects are looking at how it can best be energy efficient and be friendly to the environment in terms of water runoff, et cetera.
Thank you. Commissioner Hester, please.
Greer?
Greer, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no doubt that Verizon will be a welcome corporate citizen. However, I don't support this measure. I fail that. Tax incentives should be reserved for areas who need the development and I don't think this one does need it. I would have liked to see you move to an area that did need the development. From the question about the traffic, it's obvious that that area is already pretty populated. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this resolution? Alan, I know that you've got some guests with you tonight and I see Gail Moya-Harris here representing the Industrial Board. Gail, stand up. I know you've worked hard on this. Introduce your other guests, Alan, that you've got with you this evening.
Sure, we have Robert Holland, who's one of our legal counsels. He's been very instrumental in this project with us.
Gail, thanks for your leadership. You've been involved in this and certainly thank you for that. Anything else before we vote? Resolution 90722 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. If everybody's voted, wished to vote, record a vote, please.
Eighteen, yes. Three, no.
Eighteen, yes, and three, no. Resolution 9076, resolution appropriating $44,154.57 to the 21st Drug Court Incorporated. Revenue to come from DUI fines. Commissioner Chalfont, please.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Chalfont, the motion. Commissioner Smith, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee is four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Chalfont.
This is basically moving funds according to the Tennessee Code annotated portion, moving these funds into a dedicated account comes from the alcohol and drug and treatment account into the 21st Drug Court account.
Any questions of Commissioner Chalfont on this resolution? I see none. 9076 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. If anybody voted, wished to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-one, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 9077, resolution appropriating $20,959.86 to the 21st Drug Court Incorporated. Revenue to come from dedicated account to Commissioner Chalfont.
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner, who's the second? Hester, the second. The Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Six favor, in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee is four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Chalfont.
This is very similar to the previous resolution in that we're moving funds into the 21st Drug Court account and this comes out of the Drug Court reserve balance.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Chalfont? I see none. All in favor of 9077, press a yes button. Opposed, you no button. If anybody voted, wished to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 9078, resolution appropriating $20,434.79 to the 21st Drug Court... Resolution 907-8, resolution appropriating $20,434.79 to the 21st Drug Court Incorporated. Revenue to come from designated fund balance. Commissioner Shalfont.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety.
Six in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Shalfont.
Same as the previous. The Tennessee Code Annotated stated that funds could not be kept in the designated fund balance, so these are funds being moved into the 21st Drug Court account.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Shalfont? I see none. If you're in favor of 907-8, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 907-9, resolution appropriating $333,145 federal funds for American history curriculum writing grant. Commissioner Mills.
Move for approval.
Second.
Who was the second over here? Commissioner Hancock, the second. School Board report, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee.
Six, five, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, four, zero, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Mills.
If you look at the, at the first where, as you will see, that the school system has been awarded a three-year federal grant and in the amount of $999,436, and this is the first portion of it, and this is in conjunction with Williamson County, Mary County, and Vanderbilt. And this, this will be federal funds, and this grant does not require a local match. So if you need any more explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here and can tell you.
Any other questions on 907-9? Madam Clerk, would you correct the record? The Chair is not hearing too well tonight. It's Commissioner Jones made the motion, and Commissioner Wilson, the second. Getting harder hearing in my old age.
I won't say.
Any other discussion on 907-9, please? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
21 yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 907-10, resolution appropriating $10,000 state funds from community enhancement grant program. Commissioner Mills.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Jones, the second. School Board, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee.
Six, five, zero, no.
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
This, this will be divided between two schools, Fairview and Westwood Elementary School, and this is a community enhancement grant program, and it does not require any local match. And again, if you need other explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Any questions of Commissioner Mills on 907-10? I see none. If you're in favor of 907-10, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution appropriating $59,398 state funds for a health and wellness grant. Commissioner Mills.
Move for approval.
Who was the second? Commissioner Hester, just start raising your hand, I can hear. Commissioner Hester, the second. School Board, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee.
Six, five, zero, no.
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
This money is from a grant from the state, and the state has mandated all counties to improve the health and wellness of its students, and this money, this is not requiring any local funds. And again, if you need more explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here. One thing, our health council, I'm running, health council's working on the health of Williamson County students, too. So it is something that we are very aware of.
Any questions of Commissioner Mills on 907-11? See none? If you're in favor, 907-11, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 907-13, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Parks and Recreation Budget by $612,576 for startup operating and salary costs for the Longview Recreation Center at Spring Hill. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Cook, the second. Human Resources Committee.
That was me, but I don't remember the number. Seven, zero.
Okay. Seven, four, zero against. The Parks and Rec Committee.
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the staffing for the, for the new recreation center that's being built in the southern end of the county for the Spring Hill Thompson Station expanded area. And this is pretty much what it will take to open it and operate it in the fashion that we've opened and operated all the other facilities that the Recreation Department has done around the county. So I would add to that that Commissioner Hayes is not here, but she asked me to share, because she knew her husband was going to have surgery, that she totally supported this, and certainly Commissioner Lynch does. So I'll just add that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. This has very well been presented to the HR Committee, Parks and Rec, Budget Committee, and Mr. Hood's done a good job doing it. Commissioner Davis, question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very quick question. This is for one quarter of operating budget, if I'm understanding it correctly. So we multiply that by four to learn what the annual cost would be and also the annual revenue. And I just want to see if I'm getting it right. 2.4 million to operate for a year, but we collect a little bit over a million in fees. Am I getting that correctly?
Mr. Hood, would you like to address that?
The net cost is about 1.4 million, roughly.
Is that accurate?
I just multiplied by four.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of Resolution 907-13? See none? If you're in favor of 907-13, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button.
It's in the money.
Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 907-14, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Parks and Recreation Budget by, and that's supposed to be $60,000, revenues to come from recreation fees. So if we could, as it's a typographical, if you would just, Madam Clerk, could make that $60,000 in the heading, that'll be appropriate, please. Parks, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Walton, the second. Parks and Rec Committee.
Parks and Rec was seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Commissioner Hancock, explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make this motion when mixed, this resolution when mixed emotions. I'm certainly going to support it, but I was one of six men that started this league about 30 years ago. It's kind of, I think, some others helped us, but it's kind of sad to see it go away in a way, but it's great to see it so healthy and succeeding, and it's going to be professionally done by the professionals that we have here to do it. I would hope that you would support it very hard.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Hancock on 907-14? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Commissioner Brockman? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 907-15, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Circuit Court Clerk's Budget by $5,500. Revenues to come from reserve account to Commissioner Hancock.
I'll move this for approval. Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock.
I'm going to, if I could yield to someone on the Budget Committee, I wasn't there for the discussion on this. I just moved it because Commissioner Lynch is not here.
Commissioner Bean, now this, this basically is the new computer equipment. You want to address that?
That basically was, was the explanation given to the Budget Committee that this was new computer equipment. General Sessions, Criminal Court.
Anything other than that, Mr. Coleman, is that appropriate?
Paid for fees that have been collected, so it's a fee generation that's bought this new equipment.
Any other questions on 907-15? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Election Commission Budget by Revenues to come from other local revenues. Commissioner Cook, the motion.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wilson. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Commissioner Cook, please.
This was the expenses for the runoff election that the city of Brentwood had to have in July, and this is the amount they had to pay, was a little bit less than they thought they would.
And it's a total reimbursement. They're just reimbursing. Any other questions of Commissioner Cook on 907-16? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-17, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Animal Control Budget by $15,815.64. Revenues to come from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Hancock, the second. Budget Committee approved this, four, four, zero against. And this is in the face of the resolution. It's private donations that have been received into animal control, and this is appropriating in the budget so that they can be spent as presented based on the title and the resolution. Commissioner Ford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, since it's a donation, why do we have to take it out of fund balance? Isn't there typically a donations line that we are able to appropriate those against?
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ford is exactly right on that, but what this represents is all the donations that were received in the last budget year, and so at the end of June, they were closed out into the fund balance, so we have to pull them back out. They just waited to get a complete year at one time.
Just to count.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? I see none. 907-17 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 907-18, resolution appropriating and amending the emergency management capital projects budget by $23,000 for Homeland Security Grant Funds. Commissioner Shalfont?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont.
This is a grant coming in from the U.S. Office of Domestic Preparedness. It was part of a grant that was issued in fiscal year 2003. It shows you how quickly they're moving. This is moving, this money coming in.
Questions of Commissioner Shalfont on 907-18? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-19, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Library Budget by $20,434 for the purchase of computer equipment and software. Revenues to come from various state grant funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee approved this, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, this is, again, a catch, counting catch-up for similar to Resolution Number 16 as far as funds that are rolling over into this year.
Questions of Commissioner Barnwell on 907-19? I see none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-20, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Williamson County Public Library Budget by $61,531.38. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Library Board of Trustees?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, please, sir.
Yes, this is just the donations we receive from the city of Franklin and other various donations, and we use it to purchase books and other supplies, mostly books.
Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 907-21, resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Public Transportation Budget by $20,700. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Property Committee?
Seven in favor. We want to go.
Thank you. Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Langston, please.
Yes, this will allow the TMA group to replace one of their older vehicles with a new van, and the funds actually come from fares generated during the course of the year and placed in the general fund.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Langston? I see none? If you're in favor of Resolution 907-21, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Late-filed Resolution, 907-34, on the property assessor. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2007-8 Assessor's Budget by $3,166.66 for educational incentive salary supplements. Revenues to come from state funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Second.
Commissioner Walton? Budget Committee approved this, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Well, I'm sorry, I'll wait here. I believe that what I heard about this is that the supplements used to go directly to the employee, and now they want them to go through the county payroll for W-2 information, instead of 1099.
That's correct, and it's for special certification that they have through the State Department. They're coming through our payroll rather than going directly, so. Any questions on 907-34? See none? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Moving on to other, Resolution 907-5, resolution to appoint Cynthia- Resolution to appoint Cynthia Lynn Raschur as Judicial Commissioner for Williamson County. Commissioner Shalfont?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Walton, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee, four, four. 10705. Yeah, there it is. Four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
This is simply the formality of appointing a judicial commissioner.
Questions of Commissioner Shalfont? See none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90712. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter an agreement with business information systems. Commissioner Brockman, the motion? Who's the second? The Commissioner Walton, the second. This was approved by the Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Just to allow the first office to implement a credit card system for payment, and so this is something that I think we should support. They know it's, it's needed.
Any questions, 90712? In favor of 90712, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Twenty-one, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Ms. Anderson, I'm sure says, "Thank you very much."
Thank you. Thank everyone.
Plastic, we need.
Plastic.
Plastic.
Resolution 90723. Resolution to repeal previously adopted resolution providing for county commission representative on the Brentwood Parks Board, which was adopted on June 17, 1991. Commissioner Bain?
So move.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Parks and Rec Committee? Thank you. Steering Committee? Looks like five. Commissioner Mills? Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Yes, this is housekeeping. This is something that goes back 16 years, and, and trying to get things brought up current. We have not appointed anyone to this committee in probably 15 years, so we decided to do a resolution that would do away with this position.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Bain? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 90723, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-one, yes, and zero, no. Resolution 90724. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to endorse the revised Williamson County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Commissioner Brockman?
For approval?
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. This resolution went before the comprehensive, well, Commissioner Brockman gave us those reports.
Yes, the steering committee approved five, four, zero against, and the Regional Planning Commission, nine, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Well, this is very exciting. We have been studying very deliberately, and if some of you might notice that there is a memo that was passed out, that documents and, and really outlines the process and the level of participation that went into this, this comprehensive plan. You've got a copy of the document which is bound, you have a map attached. It really is a, an example of, of leadership and public involvement. Their consultant who worked with us all along the way, Greg Dale is here, if you, anyone has any question, but on behalf of Commissioner Judy Hayes and myself, we really feel like it was a, a very fair process. It really gauged the, the vision of our, of our public citizens, and we feel like it represents a wide range of values and really does set the, set the course, gives us a roadmap for the future. We've changed a lot in 20 years from the first plan, and it's very exciting the way that it was set forth for us. So I appreciate anyone and all of you who are involved with, with me, and it really gives you this wonderful relationship between our land use, our natural and cultural resources, our public infrastructure, and we really are a wonderful example in our region, but this just is going to help us even be better.
Commissioner Brockman, you indicated that Commissioner Hayes offered her thanks as well, and I want to thank all the commissioners, because I know we had several meetings all over the county, and for the most part, every one of you participated, but publicly, I'd like to thank Christie Earwood. Christie worked long and hard to get this together, and of course Greg Dale has already been mentioned. Greg led us through that, but I want to recognize our staff members that worked with Joe Horn. Joe Horn gets a lot of the credit, but Mike Madison and Aaron Holmes, Mike, stand up. You guys just worked laboriously. Aaron? Aaron was at every one of these meetings and took all the notes and worked with Greg to lead us through that on behalf of Williamson County Commission. Thank you for a job well done. We've studied this report. It's been published, you've given it to us. We've funneled questions back to you, and all that I've heard from all the commissioners is we're ready to vote, move on, and that's a compliment to you guys and Greg with your help. Thank you for all that you've done, so let's, let's give them a hand, because they've done a good job. Any, any questions on this resolution? As you see, the attached resolution that was signed by Mike Madison, Secretary of the Planning Commission, and also John Lackey, so it's appropriate. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Yes, I appreciate, I, I can truly understand the amount of hours and work that went into this, because being a member of the Stormwater Committee that started out and now the Stormwater Appeals Board, worked many countless hours to, you know, implement and gave us guidelines in order to do that. The, the one thing that I, I hear from citizens when I talk to them is to make sure in our report, and I know there's an area, Christie pointed out to me, that there was an area on trans, as far as implementing transportation, but, uh, infrastructure. But I would like to make sure that we tie development to the infrastructure, transportation-wise, because we have certain areas, although they were addressed in here, what they were, we have a lot of citizens that stay backed up in traffic, and we really, really, really need to make sure that development, no, no matter what area it is, that that also is addressed so that our citizens aren't blocked into these traffic areas, and I know, I know that's addressed in there, I just wanted to put a special emphasis that we try to make sure we do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I wholeheartedly endorse this comprehensive plan. It, it follows through with what a lot of the citizens in the second district had been asking for, asking us to look at and update, and I do believe it was past time for us to update our plan. It served us well, but this will also serve us well, and I wholeheartedly endorse it.
Lane Kendeck is out of date, right?
Yeah, Lane has gone back to Chicago, I think.
Other questions and comments on this, this resolution? Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll refrain from giving a pop quiz since it is, let's see, 9:25, on whether you live in a hamlet or a village, but otherwise, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? 90724 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted, and again, thanks to all of you and the staff. Let me, as this has been unanimously approved, let me share with you a concern that several of you around this board have discussed with me, and, and I'll be working on the best way to facilitate this happening, and, and our staff members, I want you to listen carefully to about what I'm about to say. Several commissioners around this table have addressed to me, "Mr. Chairman, this touches all of the cities countywide in their urban growth boundaries, impacting what they do and what we do." And the appeal from my colleagues sitting around this table to me as chairman has been less facilitate a very functional cooperative effort to make sure that the county does their part and the cities do their part in making sure that this program is successful. So one of the things that I've contemplated, and I've discussed this with Christie, I don't know exactly how we will roll this out, but there needs to be an extra effort of communication to make sure that the cities know what we've done, and Christie, we may very well want to, with this action tonight, share this with the cities, but then go the second step, perchance, that we, through this body, and I as chairman, would get together a meeting to address this issue with each of the cities, with our staff, to ensure that everybody is working off the same page. Commissioner Langston has discussed that, several of the commissioners that are involved in the UGBs of the, of the cities, and that's my appeal to you, that if you would, Christie, take the action to let the cities know what we've done, and then if you will, work with me, and we'll set this up with the cities to make sure that we communicate well and that there can be no statements made that, "Well, you didn't let us know what you were doing." We, we tonight have a perfect example before this body, Commissioner Bain draws a resolution to condemn a piece of property that we now find that a city has been working not for days, but for months, to do something that we were totally in the dark. So I want to encourage everybody involved, staff and all of us, to work as a cooperative effort to ensure that we link that communication with each of the cities, and to that commitment that we'll all commit to that. Did I say it like you wanted, Commissioner Langston?
Chairman, yes, you did. I have talked with Mr. Horn and some others about this. I think it's vitally important that we begin to move forward in, in this direction and in initiative. I don't know what the outcome can be. I don't know where we need to go. I appreciate your input into this, but also I talked with Mr. Dale, and he said that he had dealt with his problem in many different areas around the country, so where there is a problem, there's also a solution, and I'd like to see us work toward that.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me. Commissioner Ford, I'm sorry.
Hi, anything we can do to foster communication between us and the cities, I think is a, is an excellent idea. I would ask that if you're setting up meetings with the individual cities, that you alert and invite the commissioners who represent those cities to be a part of that also, to be a part of the discussions.
Commissioner, that's the only way that it'll be done, because it, you know, it impacts each of the commissioners, and each of the commissioners, it touches a city district, and anybody else that's interested in that needs to be involved. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, I applaud you for putting forth this initiative. Some of the things that's happened in the second district and in the Goose Creek area have been just absolutely terrible, the communications and those kind of things, and I hope that that will, Commissioner Ford, the position is well taken. I'm hoping that we'll find some kind of vehicle that, that the citizens will be incorporated into these things, and I thank you for pushing this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner. So that unanimous adoption of that, so we'll move on to Resolution 90727. Resolution to establish a property tax freeze implementation committee.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Walton. The motion, Commissioner Hancock, the second. Tax Study Committee? Thank you. Steering Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioners Hancock and Walton?
Commissioner, go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, okay. This is a, a resolution to form a property tax freeze implementation committee, the preliminary work necessary to adopt the tax freeze program in Williamson County that was previously discussed.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Hancock?
I think a lot of the questions have, have been asked prior to this, and when trustee Davis was up there, there, there's a million questions to this, and that's solely, that's the purpose for putting this committee together, so that all those questions hopefully can be answered, and we'll come out with a terrific product. And I might say that this commission has been at the forefront of tax relief for the elderly for some 10, 15 years, so this, this is long overdue coming from the state, and it's just incumbent upon us now to work it out where it will work.
Thank you. The point was also made in the discussion when this was reviewed, is this implementation committee, this will not be an ongoing committee, because this, this committee will be immersed in the process of tax freeze fairly quickly, because these rules have to be established, but as you heard earlier, it's the mayor's recommendation that the tax study committee participate along with folks that you see there, so. Any other discussion on 90727? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90728. Resolution to establish a new standing committee, the Building Construction Committee, and to amend the rules, regulations and proceedings of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Power, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Steering Committee, Commissioner Mills?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Power?
If you'll remember, when two of the most recent buildings came up, the newspaper article the next day had one of the, one of the lead headlines was sticker shock, and I think it's because the price had gone up so much in comparison to buildings, buildings that we've built in the past, and people were very surprised to see the new price. A lot, a lot of you voted with me last, recently, to increase the privilege tax on, for schools, and I appreciate that, and that will help fund some of this cost, and also our standard privilege tax, but there's hundreds of millions of dollars out there over the next five years that we're looking at, and if we could just save even 1% of that cost, it's millions of dollars, and I think we really need to study these buildings in more detail, to study not only the way we're doing it now, the way we've built buildings in the past, the way other communities are building buildings, and see if there's any way that we can get more value for the money. Maybe we won't save any money, maybe we'll just get a better value building, maybe we will save some money, but I, I think it, if we had a separate committee that we could study this in detail, we'd have a chance to possibly save some money, and I hope you'll approve it. You know, the main purpose of this is just to provide information. If, if, if nothing else, I think everybody here, when they vote for those new buildings, will know that it's been looked at in detail for more than just one meeting, and that they can feel confident that that money that they're spending, the taxpayers' money, is the right amount to spend. I know things have been tried in the past and haven't necessarily worked, but I'd, I'd ask you just to try it. It's a committee, we make it. If a year from now, we find it didn't, it didn't help, we didn't get the results we wanted, then we can always dissolve it, but I'd ask you to just try it. Thanks. Thanks.
Any other discussion or questions on 907-28? Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, I'm supporting this because I think it needs to be done. I think we need to take a look at this. I'm not sure this is the exact answer, but I think this committee, once formed, could come up with what the exact answer could be. I mean, we're not building experts, but we may determine that we have to have somebody on a retainer that does this for us, to see if these buildings need to come up. Do we need to have a set design for specific types of buildings that is pre-approved, and then the numbers are what the numbers are? And, like I said, I'm not sure this is the exact answer, but I think it's a good start, and I'm going to support this with Commissioner Power.
Commissioner Smith, please.
I have several concerns about this. One, Commissioner Barnwell mentioned that I look around the room, and I don't see anybody, or not too many people, who are that knowledgeable about the construction industry. But then we may have to have consultants to help us. Well, I see a whole nother layer of bureaucracy here, and Commissioner Power's comments about if we don't like it, we can make it go away. Committees seem to be kind of like taxes. Once they're in, they don't go away very easily. We have a properties committee. Perhaps some of this study can be undertaken through that. I just, what I see coming out of this is further delay, further politicizing, and instead of saving money, I suspect we'll add 1%, if not much more, to the cost of the building process in the county.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Langston, please.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the reason that this is brought forth. I think, time that I've been on the commission, which is not nearly as long, and I appreciate the veterans that have been here and the expertise they have in the budgeting process and looking at our building, I think the cost of buildings and land has certainly been an issue that we've had to deal with. And having served on several committees, education, parks, and recreation, I know there have been buildings involved in that, and I look and see the same people that would serve on that building committee, that have served on those committees. I think they've worked very diligently and worked in trying to look at cost. I think they've taken the advice of a lot of our people that should be in the know. I'm a little concerned that if we do this, again, as Commissioner Smith pointed out, I think we'll simply add another layer, and I think the same expertise that we have that would be on that building committee is the same expertise that we have in this room right now that serve on the already existing standing committees.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Green?
Yes, I have, on the comments of Commissioner Smith, as I look around the room, I don't see anybody with really qualifications that we have in place as far as is the school board has in their overlooking of the buildings. My concern is, not only in buildings and what have you, in the process of building those buildings, we have change requests that come in. If those change requests have to go through two layers of committees, we're in delay mode in getting anything accomplished, and I think it opens us up to some legal problems when we start delaying construction that's been bid out so far. And these are concerns I have down in here, and I just don't, as Mr. Langston says, the same people that are in the committees now are the same committee that's going to make up this committee. I think it's another layer that we don't need. Thank you.
Commissioner Greer, please.
In looking at this package they sent us for the Verizon building, that is more information than we've gotten on schools that we've been asked to spend millions of dollars for. So, I think this committee is needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to go back to, if I may, indulge me just a second. Mr. Chairman, I think you was on the school board, then may have been chairman of the school board, but to the late 70s, when a $17 million school building program was put forward by the Board of Education. It included Brentwood High School, Fairview High School, I think Page Middle, and another school. Well, in our wisdom, a lack thereof, we formed a committee, a supercommittee, to study this. We went all over the state, we were in session for months, and if my memory serves me correct, Mr. Chairman, you correct me, we came back, and that $17 million program, at that point in time, was a $21.4 million program. Now, I know those numbers sound small to you today, but by those days, dollars, they were super. And I say that to say this, we've got a system in place that's got expertise that has, we've brought on board, they went through a screening process, they were the best that we could find to do those endeavors, and, you know, sometimes talk is cheap, and people can come to you and tell you what they could do, and what they can't do, and what they can do. But at the end of the day, you're probably going to go right back to the professionals that you have on staff to give you advice of whether or not you need to go a stop, because I don't think any of us are builders or contractors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Power, you're one of the sponsors. I'll come back to you. Go ahead and allow you to speak, and then we'll move on to Commissioner Ford.
Just a couple of issues. One, concerning Commissioner Green's concern about change orders. This is only pre-construction. Once the bid is out, we're not going to get involved in it, so we won't slow the process down at all at that point. This only applies to pre-construction, it says so directly in the bill, so hopefully that'll alleviate your concern on that. Regarding that these people that are going to be the same people that are on the committee, they will be, for the most part. I mean, they will be the same commissioners that are here, but hopefully, they will be focused on one purpose, and that purpose is to study the buildings and find out ways that we can save costs, not a resolution, you know, for five more people, or, you know, another $100 for books, or some other issue. It's going to be one purpose, and that is to study these buildings and see what we can do to save money. I understand in the past that that's been tried. I think it can be tried again. Other communities are spending less for buildings. We can go around and around about the numbers, but I think it's clear that, at times, other communities are spending less, and I think we have spent less in the past, and I don't believe it's simply the cost of materials. I think we've changed the way we've built buildings, and I think we need to look back at the way we've done it before. I've heard comments from commissioners that have looked at the recent buildings and said, "What have we built?" I mean, we have really gone and spent a lot of money on a building, and maybe we've spent, we've gone a little bit too far on what we've done. And I'd ask you to try it. I understand that once committees are there, they're hard to get rid of, but you can see there is some opposition here, obviously, to this, and I could almost guarantee that if, after a year or two, this committee hasn't produced any results, there will be people here calling for it to be repealed, and it should be repealed if it's not producing any results. And I'll vote for it to be repealed if, at that time, we haven't done anything. So, I'd ask you to just still think about it and consider it. Thanks.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I dislike bureaucracy as much as the next guy. However, I don't see this as bureaucracy. I think that inherent in this, what Commissioner Power is really laying out, and it's not spelled out here, but I think what he's really laying out, at least when I read and look at this, is, number one, a process, which I don't believe we have a good process today. We're held hostage a lot of times. If we don't vote for a building today, we're going to put off opening that school building for another year. So, one, I think he's asking for a process, and two, I think he's asking for more information. Is this the perfect solution? Probably not, but it can be molded, it can be changed. We don't have the rule that's set around this that we'll have to put into our rulebook at some point to be able to define what is laid around this committee. So, I see at another time, there's going to be another rule have to come forward to establish this committee, just like we've got every other committee is in the rules, and that's the time that we can tweak this a bit. So, to me, it's process, more information. I don't really see how more information that this committee, this commission has to vote to spend $20 million or $50 million on the next high school, which is what it's going to be, is a bad thing. So, I'm going to support this. Even though it's not perfect, I'm going to support it in its current form. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't support this one, and I think the main, one of the main reasons besides those already stated, is that I think that we have a potential for conflict here between the county commission and the school board. If I was a school board member, I'd say, you've got the county commission looking over our shoulders, trying to micromanage what we do, and I think that this would set up a bad way to go.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hancock?
Chairman, I would like to just echo that in a more definitive way. Some of these other communities that Commissioner Power has referred to, in order to cut these costs, you're going to have to get into programming. And when you get into programming, you absolutely step on the school board's toes. If you want to run for the school board, they have elections, but when you start making cuts, you're going to get into programming. That community X don't have X, Y, and Z. So, you know, we've been here and tried this. Without going into the programming, you're not going to be able to find a lot of cuts. Now, you can go in and try to micromanage the programming, but if you do that, you're going to be head-on with the school board in a heartbeat. I've been there, done that.
Commissioner Tommy Little?
Yes, I was on the education committee when the school system brought back in a study comparing the hard bid versus construction manager. And we looked at that issue, we looked at the issue of what authority the county commission had over the construction of schools, and basically, we have very little. We can say, "We would like you to go construction," to go to hard bid. But the only thing we can do is give them a dollar amount, if my understanding, and then if they want to go hard bid, they can. If they want to, then they may have to cut their building to fit what we allot them to build it with. But we do not have any authority to tell them that they get to change construction methods or where to locate their schools. I was impressed with the presentation that they gave us on that. I think we are getting a better product by using our current method. But, like I said, I don't know that we have the authority to do what we're trying to do here, and I'm not going to be able to support it at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Walton, I'm going to come to you, because you've not addressed this issue. Please, sir?
Call the question.
Your second? Question's been called for. All in favor, call the question. Say aye. Opposed? No's raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Ayes, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. So, the question's been called for, so we'll be voting on the Resolution 907-28, establishing a Building Construction Committee and amending the rules to allow for this new standing committee. Of course, it'll take 13 votes for this to pass. So, any other questions been called for? So, if you're in favor of Resolution 907-28, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Has anybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please?
Six yes, 15 no.
Six yes, 15 no. Resolution is defeated. Resolution 907-29. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin regarding the adequate school facilities tax revenue. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made in second by Commissioner Bronckman. Tax Study Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee, four-four-zero, against. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
This is an interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin on the adequate school facility tax.
Any questions of Commissioner Walton on 907-29? Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone can address this that knows the answer to this. We have two other resolutions that are very similar, right behind this one, and my question is, where are the other cities? We have six cities in the county, and we have interlocal agreements for three.
Commissioner Walton can address that.
We're still working on those. We've sent a proposal to all the cities, and at the time of the filing, these are the three that had responded. We may ask Mayor Anderson, I don't know what the status is on the others, but at the time of the Tax Study Committee, these were the only three that they had worked out agreements with.
Mayor Anderson?
The, excuse me, the resolution with Franklin, Nolansville, and Fairview, these are the three that have expressed an interest to move forward. We have the other cities that either we will be working on. Two of the cities, we've heard absolutely nothing from, and we've sent at least two notices. Now, that doesn't mean we'll go away. We will approach those other two cities that have not responded back to us, maybe in a little bit more affirmative way. Bobby Cook was over at Nolansville last Thursday night. They passed it. Fairview has passed it. You will notice all of the verbiage is a little bit different. As many of you know, the 30% that we're talking about here has different degrees, different angles that every city wants to address, how they handle their interests. Will they respond back to us in these school issues? Franklin wanted to broaden theirs. Franklin also has kind of taken the approach right now. They want to study it some more, and then they also want to see how it would go through their committee structure. But two cities, for sure, have already signed on, and that's Fairview and Nolansville.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Does that mean, if we approve this, the City of Franklin may change it?
It's a working document, what you're authorizing, and let me explain it very point-blank, because they've asked us. The resolution that you all passed allows, on a population base, the 30% to go back to the schools when the fees are added on in that particular municipality. They can do nothing, and that is an option they have. So far, the two cities that have stepped up said, "We want to help public education in our cities or in our municipalities." There are others looking at it and seeing how they can work with it. It is a revenue stream that you all, as county commissioners, through efforts of Commissioner Power, and all of you that voted for, put a revenue stream back to each city, but they do not have to reciprocate by turning that money back over to be spent for school funding. But we are approaching each one of them, asking them to participate, because most of them are going to be involved at some level with these schools. It may be in their sewer, the water, the roads, et cetera. And that infrastructure, and that's adequate school facility tax, is all about, the infrastructure side. So, so far, only two cities have not responded in any way. That help you?
Thank you. One more follow-up, if you don't mind.
Where is it?
I do want to applaud the City of Fairview and the City of Nolansville for stepping up to the plate, and I hope that'll be a model for the other cities to jump on board and support our schools, many of which are in those cities, and there will be more infrastructure needs, as you say. But I have one minor question about the agreement, and it's all, there are different, but this point is in all of them. If these cities give us back the 30% that they're getting from us, they are reserving the right to earn interest and spend that interest on other things, not necessarily schools that they choose. Am I interpreting the agreement correctly?
You are interpreting it correctly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cook?
I just wanted to say that the point of these resolutions is not a set agreement. It's to allow the county mayor to speak to the cities about this issue.
Part of the direction, Mr. Chairman, when you all passed it, was to go out and contact all these cities, and we have made two attempts to all cities. And I think as time goes on, we will garner more support for those. In the long run, it would be wiser for a school to dedicate those funds so they could tell their constituents, it seems to me, how that money on these new permits was being spent for the- spent for those schools in that form of an infrastructure. But I don't have any control in the cities, and it's a revenue stream for them, and I understand where they're coming from. I just don't agree with it.
I appreciate you staying on.
Thank you.
Other questions on 907-29? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-30, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the town of Nolansville regarding the adequate school facilities tax revenue. Commissioner Walton.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Green on the second. Tax Study Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Same explanation, Commissioner Walton.
Yes, sir. This is the same thing, but different with the City of Nolansville.
907-30 is of consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 907-31, authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Fairview regarding the adequate school facilities tax revenue. Commissioners Walton and Jones.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Jones is second. Tax Study Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation.
Again, Mr. Chairman, same thing, but different. This is with the City of Fairview.
All right, sir. Any questions? 907-31 is of consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution making corrections and assessments for 2005 taxes. Resolution number 907-32. Commissioner Walton.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Tax Study Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is making corrections to the tax assessment in the year 2005, attached as a copy of the individuals or companies that this assessment was changed on.
Any questions of Commissioner Walton on 907-32? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 907-33, resolution authorizing the Williamson Medical Center to enter into a loan agreement not to exceed $7,700,000 for the construction of a parking garage. Commissioner Shalfont.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Mills, Budget Committee, four, four, zero against. Williamson Medical Center Board, Commissioner Shalfont.
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is to finance the new parking garage for the Williamson Medical Center, and it's being financed and paid back by the medical center. The reason it is brought, this resolution is brought to the commission is that it relates to the term of the loan and requirements that anything over three years must come for approval by the county commission, and the term of this loan will be 15 years.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont on this? Commissioner Bing, please.
How large? How many spaces? 500 and 550.
Don Webb has been sitting here patiently waiting. Don, you should have said something longer ago.
All right.
Would have brought you forward on the agenda. But you have anything to add to this, since you stayed so long with us? Just pass it, huh?
The loan is with Tennessee Fiber Bank, and 15 years, 2017. The collateral on the loan is Redmond Creek Hospital.
Any other questions on 907-33? I see none. If you're in favor, 907-33, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
21 yes. Zero, no. Resolution is adopted. Any other business to come before the... The law enforcement committee meeting for this week has been canceled, so... Any other announcements before we adjourn? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're in adjournment. It's...
Oh, Barnwell wants to stay longer.